All right, good evening and welcome everyone to the Wednesday, September 24th, starting promptly at 6:30. As you know, we at the KCPS do not start meetings late ever in any capacity. Thank you for joining us. We have a very full business meeting tonight, but we have a lot of good things to talk about. And with that, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Evans? Mr. Manns? Dr. Hartsfield?
Here.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Ms. Moncharo?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Laugher? Here. Ms. West? And Ms. Hyall?
Here. Board members looking for a motion to approve the agenda? It's the movement section. Do board members have any conversation? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans? Yes. Mr. Manns? Dr. Hartsfield?
Yes.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Moncharo?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Laugher?
Yes.
Ms. West? And Ms. Hyall?
Yes, with that, we move into the development section of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, I believe it's time for some recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Hyall, members of the board, parents and patrons who are here today. It's a pleasure to bring back to the agenda as we're fully underway with the school year on the recognitions. And it's a pleasure to acknowledge many of those who have contributed to this our success as it came to Kansas City Public Schools. And Ms. Island Houston Stewart, Chief Communications Officer, is here to facilitate that process. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Good evening to Board Chair Hyall, our board members, staff and guests. As we begin a new school year, it's my pleasure once again to present to you outstanding students, teachers and partners. As you know, each month, we recognize students for their remarkable accomplishments, KCPS teammates who go above and beyond, and every other month this year, we will recognize our community champions who give back by helping our students succeed. This evening, we will recognize our scholar superstars who participated in our student internship program and honor the business leaders who stepped up to the plate to make this a memorable experience for our students. In 2014, we launched our student internship program in partnership with J.E. Dunn Construction. The goal of the program is to provide students with key workforce soft skills and critical experiences interns. The program was operated under the guidance of KCPS Graduation Specialist, Monamei Malathia. Twenty-seven students out of 52 who applied met all of the program requirements and were able to commit to the 11 days of curriculum delivered by a national trainer from J.E. Dunn Construction. In addition to the training sessions, the students received coaching from Monamei. The coaching component included guidance on producing a resume, a cover letter, brag sheet and personal statement from each student. All told, the students received about 30 hours of training through this program. After the students successfully completed the training, they were placed as summer interns at 15 partnering businesses throughout the metro area. The interns worked 40 hours a week for eight weeks and earned $10 an hour. Collectively, they worked 5,995 hours and earned $58,650. The income received helped pay household bills, purchase school supplies and clothes, contributed to our local economy, and some were even able to start saving accounts for college. More important in the long run than the financial compensation, the businesses provided invaluable feedback to each intern throughout the summer. This collaboration was a success in large part because J.E. Dunn Construction has made it a practice to hire high school students as interns. Their positive experience with high school age interns was critical in helping to convince other businesses to participate in this program. At this time, I would like to ask Monamei to come forward and introduce our student interns and the business partners who are with us here tonight. Monamei?
Thank you. Good evening, board members, President Hyall, Superintendent Green. It's a pleasure to be up here with you to talk about what a wonderful program we had this past spring and summer with our students. It was initially a pilot program and done fairly quickly. In a few months, after meeting with the staff of J.E. Dunn, they hopped on board and said, "We can do better than two interns. How about we just put a whole program together with you and get as many as we can placed across the metropolitan area?" Of course, I was like, "Yeah, okay, let's do this." And we got it done. And we are excited that we had so many young people who really want to take on this challenge and be the first to work with us through this internship program. We have a few of them here with us. We had about seven students that graduated from our high school, of course, and had gone on to post-secondary institutions. We do have some juniors and seniors, of course, juniors and seniors that are left in our district that we're inviting back for the next round of internship program. But the ones here with us, I want to recognize them personally, and then I want to show some pictures along the way, if I can do this multitask, recognize a student's name and some pictures along the way. So I do want to have the students stand up, and then when I call your name, if you guys can come down here and so that can see you, just lined up for me, okay? So the first student is Kali Kradup. She, come on up here. Second student is Kendra Zaminroy. Tavarez Lawi. Tony Lee. Vanessa Mendoza. Zamon Jones. And Tao Wong. You guys, so I know we had 27, but conflicts, et cetera, they were all not able to be here. They're excited and support their teammates. So this is the small group of your student internship program. And you guys want to turn around? Face the board? Face out. Turn around, face out. We could not have done this without the partnership of all of the businesses. You know, we presented this to them, and boy, they jumped on board and said, "We are willing to help out and we want your students," because we feel it's important to develop these young folks early and the right way in giving them the experiences. So we have a few businesses here as well that I want to recognize and say thank you for their support in taking on our students for this past summer. So when I call your organization and name, just come on up, maybe you can line up this way. I'm just making it up as I go. So we have, the very first organization I want to have a special acknowledgement for is J.E. Dunn Construction. Who is here representing J.E. Dunn is Keisha Bosby. She is my sidekick. She has worked tirelessly to make sure that we have all the snacks ready for the kiddos, all the rooms done. She worked with a national trainer that trained the students. She's just been a valuable partner for us here. Marvin Carolina is the lead in, on the J.E. Dunn side. He unfortunately had to be on business this evening. So I want to recognize J.E. Dunn with their little certificate here, and I'll read the certificate. J.E. Dunn Community Champion Award is hereby presented to J.E. Dunn Construction for supporting the achievement and growth of students through the KCPS Student Internship Program. The next person and organization is actually our very own Kansas City Public Schools. We did take the challenge on ourselves and had our students in our buildings and all over the Kansas City location under Mr. Tom Brenneman's IT group with all the one-to-one initiative. So our kids were up on the ceilings rewinding things, okay? So, you know, I guess you can blame the kids if you don't... But Mr. Tom Brenneman, come up here. His team was fantastic, and actually, one of the students has returned to kind of help out after school as they continue with the one-to-one. But we also want to recognize Tom and his team for their contribution. They had three students in the IT department. So let me see if I can, oh, that's interesting. I was going to show some pictures. And then we also have, we have Mr. Eddie Whitley from Whitley Construction. What a fantastic guy. He's all the way out in Lee's Summit, and so we were like, "Oh, my God." Okay, Lee's Summit isn't that far. Well, he's on the tip of Lee's Summit, like the furthest before whatever the next town is, because I went out there to do my site visits with the students over the summer. I thought, "Oh, my God." But Ashley made it every day. She made it. Her mom was diligent, dropped her sister off at KU, looped around the city, went all the way to Lee's Summit, looked back downtown to go to work, and every day they did that. And so we want to thank Mr. Whitley for being a mentor to Ashley and just a great partner for us here. We also want to recognize C.Biz Benefits and Insurance Services. So Jeff Falsner and Carol Watley, come on up. They are all the way out in Overland Park, okay? So we are all over the place. Now, I'm more familiar on that side, so it didn't feel like it was a very long drive, but I'm sure for Tariq, their student, it probably was to get out there. But I was, I mean, that's a great office building, for one, out there in Overland Park. We want to thank them for taking Tariq on and doing such a great job, helping him explore various departments, because he was all over the place over there, and got to interview everyone from the president of the unit to all the team members. And so our students really got to meet a number of people. One of the key things we want to make sure they understood was networking, right? Meeting those right people at the right time and making those relationships. So we want to thank you for your participation in the internship program.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Oh, I do want to recognize, let me see if I can, our business partners that are not here. Fulfillment Plus, Kansas City Area Transportation Authority, that was fun, KCATAs, Norton Schmidt, the Office of the Mayor, BNIM, Mr. Gunnar Hand is not here, United Way of Greater Kansas City, Kansas Department of Parks and Rec, UMB Financial, the Missouri Department of Labor, the Human Rights, the Commission of Human Rights Department, MCC Pin Valley, ACS Smart Buildings were the other businesses that took on our students. Let me see their other pictures. These are some images from the training. That's Mr. David Disney. He did an awesome, I don't know if you guys remember this, kids, but this whole building, the metal thing having a stand was really neat. And I don't know how many he could pile up without it falling, but it was cool. And they took a tour. Of course, everyone was loving J.E. Dunn. They all want to work there because it has a basketball court downstairs and a full gym and, you know, J.E. Dunn, right? They do it. Some other images, here's a couple of, you know, our students wiring with Mr. Brenneman's team, and then Mr. Dunn with the two interns that they had at J.E. Dunn. That's one of the, young lady at the KCATAs, and our training location was at J.E. Dunn for those 11 sessions, and that's the class they took. That's it. Thank you.
If any of our students would like to make any comment or our partners, we certainly would welcome that at this point.
Do you want to?
You don't have to. You can.
No? Keisha? No? Do you want to say anything? No? No? Oh, yeah. Okay.
Please do.
I would want to say thank you so much for the program. Thanks to J.E. Dunn for putting it together, and we benefited so much from having Tariq in our office over the summer. So he was just an amazing intern, and we do want to say thank you for the program and thanks for enlightening us, because it was a great experience for us. And I didn't know we could put him in the ceiling and have him do wiring, so now we know for next time.
Now, we're going to have some conversations around risk management here before we turn them on.
Thank you. Great. We want to thank again our partners and our students for being here tonight, and a special thanks to Monamei for doing a fabulous job this summer pulling all of this together. This is a great example of what can be accomplished with innovative ideas and public and private partnerships, and we honor and thank both the students and our corporate partners for their commitment to this program and to our success as a school district. Let's give them another round of applause.
And let me add another point to Monamei. I think we want to talk about next year now, because we already started working on next year, and just kind of let the folks know what we're, because we want to expand it even further, and people are knocking at the door for our scholars, so.
So when we had our first meeting last spring, it was a standing room only with the businesses. They came in and we didn't have enough seats. So there were a lot of them that were really interested. Some of them didn't sign on because it was happening too quick and they just wanted to wait another year, so we're hoping those will come back. We have two sessions for recruitment of businesses this year versus one, because we're expecting that turnout. And I have the invitations letter. I'm going to leave it at the table out there and have the board members have a copy as well. It's happening on Tuesday, October 7th, and Tuesday, October 14th, at J.E. Dunn location. And it's for breakfast, so it's from 8 o'clock in the morning until about 9:30. We're looking for 50-ish, 60 businesses, I mean, positions from our community business partners. So anything you can help us get the word out, that'd be wonderful.
Two quick questions. First, are we limited at 50 to 60 spots?
No.
And the second question would be, I think, as board members, this is a unique opportunity for us to dip into our networks. So if you could perhaps provide us an emailable version of that invitation, I will certainly send it out. I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I assume that we have some contacts that might be very interested in this. And the last thing I'll say is just simply this, we talk a lot as a board about our district being in collaboration between the community and our district, and we often talk about the need for the business community and to come together to support our students. And certainly, I just want to say again how appreciative we are of these companies for hosting our students and our scholars and helping them learn. I'm sure it was a transformative experience for them, and so thank you. We often talk about the need, but sometimes we forget to recognize when businesses really come through for our kids. So for those of you who are here from the business community who made this possible, thank you. And for our students, thank you, as always, for representing us so well and as we know you can.
They did. They did. Thank you.
I'd like to have Dr. Green come forward. We're ready to do our terrific teammates. It's an honor to recognize two terrific teammates this evening. Our terrific teammates are nominated by their peers and must exhibit traits that set them apart in the areas of attitude, support of student achievement, execution of assignments, initiative and adherence to procedures. And each month, it is a pleasure to showcase these outstanding employees. Is Kimberly Myers here? Come forward, please. Kimberly Myers is a second grade teacher at Gladstone Elementary, and she was nominated because of her initiative. According to the nominator, quote, "Kimberly is one of the most hard-working teachers I have ever had the privilege of working with in the Kansas City Public Schools. Kimberly has taught several grades during her time in KCPS. She researches and investigates each new change and is prepared when given a new assignment. She prepares her activities for the classroom over the summer break. And last year, she had foot surgery but continued to be there for her students even when it was difficult." So congratulations to Kimberly Myers for being recognized as a KCPS terrific teammate and for her commitment to our students. Ms. Newby, come forward. Ms. Newby is a sixth grade teacher at Woodyer Elementary, and she was nominated for her support of student achievement. The nomination reads as follows. "Ms. Newby has a strong and positive rapport with her students and has used her strong relationships with her students to push them to achieve at their highest level of academic success. She has used data provided to her to drive her classroom instruction and differentiating that instruction to meet each student's needs. She has a very positive attitude and rapport with her colleagues. Her foremost priority is seeing each student in her class succeed, both personally and academically. Congratulations to Ms. Newby for her dedication to students." This concludes our presentations for this evening, and we will see you again next month.
Mr. Evans? Excuse me. Ms. Newby? I'm sorry. I just have to say this. I am so glad to see you. You're like a breath of fresh air. And someone has asked me on news occasion, "Have you seen Ms. Newby?" And I haven't talked about. I mean, you are, this is one of the finest teachers I think I have ever come in contact with, so you are well-deserved and well-respected among the ranks of the teaching profession. So thank you, Ms. Newby, so much for your dedication and hard work.
We now move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. This is the time for the community to bring forward their concerns, their thoughts, their ideas, and share them with the board. As a reminder, speakers, you have three minutes. I will wave my arms frantically if we are approaching three minutes, and we'll continue to do so until we are able to get your attention. Thank you very much. First to the mic tonight, we have Mr. Tom Love, speaking about Senate Bill 319.
I'll try not to look at you if you're waving. Actually, I want to start off by thanking Dr. Green for all kinds of things he's done for the district, in particular, hiring the reading teachers. There's been 17 people hired. Five, I think, were reading specialists for the 24 schools. Of course, I'd like to see 24 reading specialists and paraprofessionals, okay? Changing the age of the kindergarten students, so one-sixth of the students are now a year older than they would have been, and they're in school this year. They're going to do a lot better. And we've gotten 12 weeks of summer school prior to first grade, six weeks prior to kindergarten, six weeks prior to first grade funded for all students. It's the third of a school year. And we've also gotten summer school funding. I think 5,000 more students went to summer school this summer. And some of these were statutes, and this statute I'm talking about tonight has funding, and it's a literacy law that was to take effect in 2002. And that law says that we can apply for funding from DESI for additional personnel costs. So I'd really like to see that take place. I've talked to Al Tunis about that and some other people. And that law, it identifies fourth, fifth and sixth graders that are reading two years below grade level. Until someone gets to fifth grade reading level, they're considered functionally illiterate. And so currently, the numbers I've been requesting, and unfortunately, I've been requesting it for six months, I've only gotten numbers for the fourth graders that are to be helped. And the statute itself says that each district shall make available to any parent, patron or media outlet the number of students receiving remediation pursuant to this section. So evidently, we're not helping the fifth and sixth graders. And they're supposed to receive help during the school year and summer school. It's mandatory, required thing, and it's not taking place, I don't believe. The other thing that we're supposed to do is to offer seventh through 12th grade help for any student that hasn't completed, or hasn't gotten to the fifth grade reading level. And I haven't received any numbers for those students, so I guess I'm here asking for those numbers for the other students or asking that we seek the funding, hire the additional personnel that's needed and help those students get to where they can succeed in school. I found that there were 119 fourth graders, and these are students that are not under special ed requirements, and they're not English second language students. So they're students that are capable without any problem, except they didn't have the help they needed. And I'd really like the school district to help students that are currently in the middle school and high school that didn't receive the help that they were entitled to by law during fourth, fifth and sixth grade, the mandatory help. That law also requires a mandatory retention at fourth grade. So I know Dr. Green will take care of it. Every time I bring something forward, he pretty much just gives the command and these troops over here put it together, and I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Next up this evening, we have Mr. Hector Casanova, speaking on Skerritt Elementary School and a mural project.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you guys today. I just wanted to give you an update on this project that I've been involved with. You'll see images that are from the project, but I'll give you a little bit of background first. My name is Hector Casanova, and I teach at the Kansas City Art Institute. One of the classes that I teach is called "Us," and the class focuses on the social responsibilities of being an artist, as well as the collaborative nature of art. As I was designing the curriculum for this class last year, I was looking for venues to do murals, because I thought that was going to be an ideal way to address this material with my students. And I was thankfully put in touch with Dr. Luis Cordova at a certain point, and once we started meeting, it seemed like our agendas really meshed perfectly well. He alerted me to the existence of Skerritt Elementary School, which has been brought it up for six years now. And for the last many years, it really had just become sort of like an eyesore to the local community. Residents had been complaining about vandalism and graffiti, and it's just becoming a magnet for just negative, you know, criminal activity and loitering and so on. So as a method to, you know, to do graffiti abatement, murals have been proven to be one of the most ideal ways, basically, to combat this kind of entropy. So we started working on this project for the Skerritt Elementary School, and the first thing that I set out to do was to seek the community's input, because it felt very important to me not to just, you know, swoop in and come up with, you know, some imagery or a concept that would feel completely foreign to the community. It's essential that the residents felt pride and ownership of this mural. So we set up, I set up an email account, and we have a Facebook page. I wrote to the Northeast News, and I met with the Skerritt Neighborhood Association to do a presentation of the project, of what I was intending to do. And so far, the feedback has been extremely positive, overwhelmingly enthusiastic. Neighbors and residents have written in with suggestions. There's been some themes that became very obvious. Peace, community, heritage were the main themes, with, you know, a lot of variations, you know, the different ethnic waves of immigration. History and landmark is another one. So I took all of these, I made a list of all these concepts, gave them to my students, and over the last month or so, they have been working to develop all these murals that you see around you. They're addressing all of these elements, everything from history of Kansas City and the Northeast specifically, as well as reflecting the different waves of immigration by, you know, there's a panel that has, a mural section that has different cuisines from the different areas, so there's African food, Vietnamese food, Mexican food, American food, and overall the unifying theme of community. So we developed this honeycomb pattern and this bee and ant motif that travels throughout. This is a very abbreviated version of this project, and I just wanted to update you. If at any point you'd like to know more about it, I would be happy to speak with you again. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there are handouts at each board member's place?
Yes, that's correct. Everybody should have as much information as you could want, probably. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next to speak this evening, we have Lisa Henry Bowen, speaking on suggested improvements to A.C. Prep High School.
I have some handouts we can give to you, the board. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. This needs to go to the board president, and then this to Dr. Green, and the rest, these go to the rest of the board members. There you go. Is it possible that I can wait until you all get the packets before my time starts?
Absolutely.
There's the larger packet that Dr. Green should have and also the board president They're all already, they're already set together. Thank you very much. I like to come here with good news... I like to come here with good news. Dr. Sanders and I have had some very, I thought, very positive conversations over the summer. And unfortunately, this is going to be another one of those "I'm not a happy parent" conversations. This has to do with safety at A.C. Prep. You have in front of you an email that I sent to your security department. It was outlining a situation that happened at A.C. Prep in which it took them twenty-five minutes to find my son in the building, and it was a non-emergency situation. When I inquired as to why it took so long to find my son so that he could call me, I was given descriptions by various staff that there is a faulty intercom system that is not working, so teachers cannot hear in various parts of the building. I don't think I have to tell you that this is a big safety issue de jour. I reached out to your safety department, and the safety department then, they then volleyed me to your legal department. Now, let me just be very frank, folks, I'm not a stupid woman. If security can't answer a question about are the intercoms working, then that pretty much tells me that security either doesn't know or there's no plan in place. And that makes me very nervous as a parent and as a community member. I am, I also gave to Dr. Green and the board president two examples of security plans that are in place that can be found on the Internet. I was very, very shocked that I could not find anything on KC Mo's Basic Protocol for Emergency Situations online. But I could find the two-hundred-and-twenty-page protocol for the University of Missouri Kansas City, and that has everything excluding proprietary information. So if their plan can be found, I'm trying to understand why ours cannot be found. And when I asked if I could get a copy of the plan from A.C. Prep, I was told that there was no brochure or anything that even outlined a basic emergency protocol plan that a parent could take away with them. I'm not happy about that, because that speaks to how the district views the safety of our children. I took it further. I placed a call to Dr. Colvin of the Park Hills School District. Their plans are all online, including a wonderful teaching handbook that is just awesome. He gave me some amazing information about what they are doing and how proactive they are being as a school district with regards to safety issues. So I printed up for all of you my to-do list to you, because safety is too important. And I know, I see some laughter, and I do have extra if there are members of the media who would like this list, so that you can keep an eye and make sure that this is happening. But it took twenty-five minutes to find my kid in a building, and there was no emergency situation. Dr. Robinson is doing a very fine job, from what I can tell, but he cannot do the job he needs to do if he cannot get the intercoms working. And it also speaks to the safety of teachers. If a teacher needs to reach another teacher or reach administration, they can't do it. I see your hands waving. So I'm not happy. You all need to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for bringing this forward and for your work on the research you've obviously done. Next up to speak is Mr. Brian Stabler, who is speaking to us about Thatcher.
Thank you for hearing me again tonight. I had something prepared, but I don't think I'm going to read the whole thing. I'll just go through it briefly. Over the past year, you've heard from the Thatcher alumni, Northeast residents, past and present, and elected representatives who support saving Thatcher. Last month, we provided you with information that our volunteers have been able to put together about the building, and hopefully, you have the time to read it and seriously consider what Thatcher means to our community. Now, tonight, as I was sitting here, I heard a lot of, I witnessed a lot of very positive examples of the school district working with the business community, working with the communities, and working with the Art Institute on various projects. And so I guess it's just my hope that as we continue to search for a solution for Thatcher, that we can maybe sit down and work with the school district and with the school board and maybe come up with some more proactive or positive solutions for preserving Thatcher for our neighborhood, much like the Skerritt School has also been saved for Northeast, and maybe give it a little bit more time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Finally, I apologize, board members, Mr. Manny Abarko was also on the agenda to speak about Thatcher. He has emailed and asked to be removed, but he will, I think, speak at a future meeting. The last comment tonight comes from Ms. Kami Willis, who is speaking on an outreach program for at-risk girls. Ms. Willis, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Okay, good evening to the superintendent and the board members. My name is Kami Willis, and I'm here representing the House of Restoration. I was here back in July to actually introduce our program, and now I'm back once again to ask for your support. We have stepped out into the schools, and we're trying to offer young ladies an opportunity to participate in the House of Restoration's outreach program. Since then, our outreach program has taken off, and we have established that the new floor residential facility is greatly needed within the Kansas City, Missouri School District. So I'm here this evening asking that the school district would accept our proposal to provide unaccompanied adolescent girls with stability to finish their education. So we are hopeful that we will be, that somebody would be able to contact us so that we can bring our outreach services to your district. Thanks a lot. And I also, I handed out flyers the last time. I do have one, if I could just pass it back around. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening, and appreciate your feedback and your honesty. That brings us to item 2.03, the superintendent's report. Dr. Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Hile, members of the board. We will be providing an update on where we are with our financial stability and health. And Mr. Al Tunis, chief financial officer, will provide that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Green, Mr. Hile, members of the board. The sheet in front of you is our revised sheet that we talked about at our last board meeting. We're only sixteen and a half, seventeen percent of the way into this fiscal year, and so there's not a lot of financial activity that's been taking place. This goes through August 31st, but it does give you a comparison that shows that we're very comparable to where we were a year ago at this time. What I would like to bring to your attention, though, regarding the revenue expense and our financial outlook, we've talked about a number of things that are included in this year's budget. If you recall, the governor had made promises that in the event that his veto would be upheld, that he would reinstate some of the funds for public education. He did that. He reinstated right at $100 million in money for the foundation formula. And the impact that that has on our district is that when we originally set our budget, we had the money included, and we were using, we talk about the proration factor, and that proration factor was set at ninety-eight percent. To remind you, a hundred percent means the formula is fully funded. So we're at ninety-eight percent. When he did the withholds, it took us back to ninety-three percent. The hundred million dollars, because not everything has been reinstated yet, brought us back up to ninety-six, excuse me, ninety-six percent. So we're still a little bit less than where we were and what we had projected, and we're, with some collection, with the positive collections coming into the state, we're very hopeful that we'll hit the ninety-eight percent. But that hundred million dollars got us back at least to ninety-six, so we're pleased about that. Another area that we had projected that we were uncertain, because we had not received our assessed valuation, our certified assessed valuation, we projected into our budget about a little less than a two percent decrease in the district's assessed value, because we were uncertain of the impact on recalculating personal property tax. We talked about that at one time. Now that we have our certified assessed value that just came in last week, we're about a half of one percent better than where we were a year ago. So there's about a two percent gap, and so that's good news, which helps offset some of the loss that we have projected in our state aid with our proration factor still at ninety-six percent. That's really important for us, because one of the items that we're going to ask the board to do during the business section and the approval is to set our tax rate, and to set our tax rate at $4.95, which is the rate that was set by the federal judge, and it has been the same since 1996. And so that $4.95 will require the board to approve, and that's what we set. That needs to be done by October 1st, and then we'll submit that to the county. Tax bills are then calculated based upon how this board sets that levy. So that will be coming here in just a few minutes on the agenda. And the last thing I wanted to draw your attention today is the official count day. And that's very, very important, because we've talked about enrollment, and we do plan in the future to talk a little bit in depth about our enrollment. But today is our official count day. And we had projected in our enrollment somewhere around thirteen thousand eight hundred. We're pleased to report that that number is around fourteen thousand four hundred, which is not only better than what we projected, but it's also better than what it was a year ago. So maybe not as good as where it was when we were using that three-year average, but we'll have more information about enrollment in the future. But because today is our official count day, I want to do at least let you know what we know, is that it's better than projected, it's better than last year, not quite as good as what we're going to, what's going to drop off our three-year projection, but certainly, we're moving in the right direction. With that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding our finances.
Board members, let's go with a round of questions. Let's go with one question per board member, and then we'll circle back around. If there are questions that go unanswered, we can ask additional questions. Ms. Montero.
Mr. Shannon, just that last statement, why are you projecting a three-year drop? Please explain.
It's not, it's, it's based, the state is, will calculate your state aid based upon your best weighted average daily attendance in that three years. And so our best is three years ago. Next year, in FY16, that best year is going to fall off.
Okay, great. And what did, what was our ending, what was our last year's number enrollment rate, and what was our ending at the end of the school year?
We're using fourteen thousand two hundred, oh, I missed it by eight. Fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-two is how we ended, correct? That's our official count, and we're a little over fourteen four now.
Okay.
Board members, let's, again, let's keep it to one question as we go around, and then we'll circle back if there are other questions. Mr. West?
The only area that looks to be a little bit up from where it was for the period last year in a significant amount was plant services. At this point, we had, you know, gone through utilization about ten percent. We're at about fifteen percent this time at plant services. Is there anything there we should be worried about?
Not at all. Part of that's tied to money that we rolled over that's part of our, money we have available for summer construction, and so it's money that we set aside, and it's just spent at a different rate during the summer.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Manzer? Dr. Hartsfield? Mr. Evans? Ms. Robinson? Ms. Montero, do you have any additional questions?
I'll wait for the tax levy issue to come up.
Mr. West? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. Next up, we have a report from the Early Learning Commission. Board members, as I explained in the email I sent out, this is a commission that was born from an exploratory commission that was put in place by this body a year and a half ago. And so they are here to give us a report as to what they have gone and done. Tonight presenting, we have Mr. Herb Khan and Mr. George Lopez. Thank you, gentlemen, and the floor is yours. Board members will reserve some time at the end for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Green, and members of the board, in May of 2013, this board approved a resolution which instructed the Early Learning Commission with the following, I'm quoting from your resolution. "All five-year-olds within the KCPS geographic boundaries will be socially, emotionally, and academically ready for kindergarten." That was the charge that you presented to the commission that was formed at that time. We reported to you in November of last year, at the conclusion of the task force of the commission's work, and told you that we would now be getting ready to implement the findings that the commission had rendered. And that's what's happened since then. So why did you adopt the resolution that I just read to you? I think the reason was a year ago, and even more so today, we all know that the goal that you set for us is worthwhile. You wanted, and we want, all three- and four-year-olds to have access to year-round, eight-hour-day, five-day-a-week early learning education. Not daycare, but a real learning experience with qualified teachers. And even though I think everyone in this room probably knows the reason that we need early learning, I'll just remind you, it's been, I think, well-established now that if a child is not ready for kindergarten, they're probably not going to be reading at grade level by third grade. If they're not reading at grade level by third grade, they're probably never going to get caught up, and there's a good chance that a lot of those kids will then drop out of school and become a burden to society. And if you compare the cost of sending a child to early learning childhood pre-K education to the amount of money that society spends on a kid that drops out at the age of sixteen and gets in trouble, it's easy to see why we're pushing it so much. The work that we've done is going to be explained to you in great detail by George Lopez, who is the chair of the board that was established upon the conclusion of the work that our commission did. And so I'm not going to spend time on that, because George will fill you in. But just as you wanted KCPS to take the lead in this program, just think about the impact that this program could have. And we've all talked about that, and I think it's real. If it develops as we planned, we could see not just a continued growth of the district, and we're all so proud of what you all have done under your leadership and Dr. Green's leadership in the last year, and the numbers that we just heard from Al Tunis are certainly encouraging. So not only will that growth continue, but if we actually implement, if Kansas City School District implements a real, honest-to-goodness, early learning program, we could actually see not only the district continue to throw, to thrive and grow, but we could even see people wanting to move back into Kansas City, into the school district, to take advantage of all the good things that you're doing. So with that, I'll turn it over to our chairman, George Lopez, who will tell you what your commission has been doing since last November.
Thanks, Herb. Board President Hile, members of the school board, Superintendent Green, thanks for allowing me the opportunity to update you on the progress of the interim board of the Early Learning Commission, or as we affectionately refer to it as ELSI. My name is George B. Lopez, and I am the executive vice president of James B. Nutter and Company. I've worked for the Nutters for over twenty-five years, and you could say that that's my day job. However, my real job lately, as it turns out, is to be a community volunteer working on this early childhood education project. Believe me, it's been an honor to do so, and it is an honor to appear before you today. Before I begin, I would like to thank Herb for his outstanding leadership in chairing last year's early, Kansas City Early Childhood Education Commission. Herb is not only largely responsible for the excellent work that the commission did, but he's helped guide the work of our interim board since then and has helped get us to this important point, when mere words on paper become action, when concept becomes reality. So to Herb, I say we deeply appreciate your commitment to the children of this district. My purpose today is to bring you up to date on the work of the interim ELSI board. It's been a few months since we've come before you. As Herb indicated, once the work of the commission was completed last year, the torch was passed to the interim ELSI board. Beginning in January, a dedicated group of community leaders and subject matter experts representing a broad swath- representing a broad swath of our corporate, education, and political communities has been meeting twice a month to develop the structure of a comprehensive early childhood education program for all three- and four-year-olds who reside within the boundaries of the KCPS district, building on the success that the district has currently had in its early childhood endeavors. As an overview, it's important for me to explain both the short-term and the long-term goals of our efforts. Above all, we want to deliver comprehensive early childhood education to our children as soon as possible. But given the current political climate, relying on a new source of federal or state funding to suddenly materialize appears overly optimistic at best. Therefore, in the short-term, we believe the district should seek a stable, dedicated source of funding, such as a modest property tax mill levy increase, perhaps in 2015, that carries with it an appropriate sunset provision. Ideally, our long-term goal is for the state legislature to establish a new taxing authority that would be dedicated entirely to early childhood education, in much the same manner that the state legislator, legislature created the Jackson County Sports Authority to oversee the funding and management of our local sports facilities. However, such legislation would undoubtedly take time to pass, if it ever did pass, and would likely extend the implementation date of a comprehensive program to the end of this decade or the beginning of the next. In our opinion, our children cannot and should not wait that long to receive quality early education. We simply cannot afford to wait. With that overview in mind, here's what our interim board has been working on since we last came before you. First, we have completed and approved a formal set of bylaws which lays out the governance structure of the proposed early childhood program. Our program will be supervised by the Early Learning Commission, or ELSI, an 11-member blue-ribbon commission comprised of appointees from the mayor's office, KCPS, Missouri Charter Public Schools Association, the Kansas City Public Library, and the Mid-America Regional Council, as well as six at-large appointees. The ELSI board will manage the early childhood program, provide oversight, and ensure compliance with all applicable laws. In addition to ELSI, our program will have an independent quality assurance entity comprised of area subject matter experts called the Quality Review Commission, or QRC. The Quality Review Commission will establish comprehensive, data-driven standards to ensure the highest quality of our providers, their teachers, and their facilities, as well as oversee student assessment, student tracking, and curriculum refinement. The QRC will, will also oversee the capacity building portion of the program, so that providers who fall short of meeting the standards established by the rating commission can take the necessary steps to elevate the quality of their programs and/or increase the number of seats they can offer. Second, the interim board has been working to better define the scope of our program in order to more accurately project its true cost. Assuming that our goal is to achieve an 80% participation rate for all three- and four-year-olds in a year-round program, with an average cost of $8,000 per student, we have thus far determined the cost of such a program, less current dollars already being spent on early childhood education, to be approximately $28 million. It's worth noting that a group of local foundations recently funded a comprehensive gap analysis study, the results of which could be known in early 2015, which will provide a more accurate snapshot of our existing capacity, and thus enable us to more accurately project the true cost of the program. Third, the interim board has identified a group of potential donors that will help get our initiative approved by the voters. We have already begun to meet with corporate leaders and local foundations in order to raise funds to cover our basic operating expenses, as well as to conduct a voter survey, which will help us determine the optimal political strategy. The feedback we have received thus far from prospective donors has been very positive. As a footnote, we will be filing our application to be approved as a 501(c)(3) organization shortly. Fourth, the interim board has approved a budget of $76,000 to cover Phase 1 of our operations. Fifth, the interim board has studied, and continues to study, a range of other possible funding mechanisms, such as increasing the state tobacco tax, or a property tax increase administered by another local taxing jurisdiction, such as the Kansas City Public Library. However, the more we study these alternative options, the more we find that these funding sources are either insufficient to meet our needs, or create highly complicated legal issues that cannot be reasonably solved. Sixth, the interim board will soon begin reaching out to other community stakeholders, such as the charter schools, to secure their support and to ensure that funding they receive from a mill levy increase will be dedicated to early childhood education. In addition, the interim board will begin interviewing political consultants to determine who best to manage the political process and to build a successful campaign. As a final comment, our board is very encouraged by the momentum that early childhood education is gaining in our community, as well as the rest of the country. Many cities have implemented or are beginning to implement early childhood education programs, Kansas City included. Policymakers throughout Missouri are talking about the issue, and here in Kansas City, the KCPS programs that Jerry Kitsey and others have developed are an everyday reminder that the educational foundation of the 21st century is going to be built on early childhood education. Earlier today, as many of you know, our Chamber of Commerce announced that they've established kindergarten readiness as one of their Big Five initiatives. As I like to say at our meetings, it's not a question of if, but when we get early childhood education. For these reasons and on behalf of my fellow interim ELSI trustees, I am asking for this body's approval to continue our vital work on this project. We will continue to report back to you in the coming months and keep you abreast of any new developments. This time, I'll be happy to take any of your questions, or if you'd like to discuss the matter privately, please feel free to contact me at G. Lopez@JBnutter.com, and I'll give you, I'll forward all my contact information to, to Mr. Hile. So, thanks for every, thanks again for everything that this school district, our superintendent and this board has done for our children and our city.
Board members, with that, we will open the floor for questions. Mr. Evans, may we start with you? Okay. Dr. Hartsfield? Ms. Manzer?
It's very encouraging, and the right time, it was probably the right time 20 years ago, but now is as good a time as any, so thank you. So, just again, you're looking at potentially putting, putting together a recommendation or proposal whereby we would seek a levy that would be the special tax, it would be creating a special taxing district, is that correct? Is that?
Well, step one, okay, that's sort of the short-term solution would be a modest property tax mill levy increase through the district, this district, yeah. The long-term goal, what we'd like to get to is a stable, long-term source of funding. But in order to do that, Jefferson City's got to pass legislation to make that happen. But it would be modeled after something, say, like the Jackson County Sports Authority.
So, if, if it requires some kind of action in Jeff City, is there work underway, or some groundwork or research happening about what it would take to get that kind of action through the General Assembly?
That's one of the things that, that our board is, is working on. In fact, we're going to be receiving a briefing at our next meeting, funny you should mention that, from, I think Kelvin Simmons is gonna, is doing some research on that. But again, that's, that's a long-term goal. And of course, the idea behind that is to, you know, not only have it be focused on the district, but have it be something that would be citywide, or perhaps countywide. You know, again, it's, it's kind of a complicated funding landscape that, that we're sort of looking over right now. And, you know, the emerging, the emerging path to get there is, you know, in the short-term is, it appears to be a property tax mill levy increase.
Mr. Rogers? Mr. West? Ms. Montero?
Yes, thank you. I think this is amazing work to hear the presentation that's, that's going on of things that are very out of my realm and out of my scope to, where to even begin, and I appreciate that work being done. But my question I'm trying to understand is, so, if you're needing, having private, private investors and still coming up short, are we not asking the right rich people to donate to us? Or, I mean, I'm just not understanding, why is it needed to increase this levy, to have the district propose in the legislature, and then my computing, and tell me if I'm wrong, then to seek out funds from the district, which is funding education K through 12, not so much necessarily early children, early children, childhood learning, sorry, which I wholeheartedly support, and, and I know the research that is done saying, which is correct, as Mr. Khan said, about it's better to invest into a child in education rather than to invest when they're in the prison system. So, I'm just not understanding, why aren't more private benefactors donating to help you meet this gap of the 28 million for year-round early childhood learning in the district?
Well, I, I think the short answer to that is that they are donating. There are significant private dollars in this space right now. The issue is to get to a comprehensive, you know, 365-day, you know, five days a week, eight hours a day type of program involves, you know, consider, you know, with all the attendant expenses along with that, there's, there's a natural funding shortfall. And it's something, incidentally, that if you look at other cities that have implemented this, they have the same, they, they have to seek some sort of, you know, stable, dedicated funding source in order, in order to augment the private dollars that are already in there. If you look at other cities like Tulsa, New York City, Chicago, you know, places like that, that's, that's what they're doing.
Yes, I totally understand about the startup. Startup is initially, it does require a lot of funding with any type of business or private entity starting, starting up does make sense.
Here's what, here's what happens. We could go to any number of foundations, including the Gates Foundation, which I think is the biggest, and ask for $28 million to fund the program for this year, and maybe ask for another $28 million to fund it next year, but that's not sustainable. There's no foundation in the world that can commit to fund that kind of money every year ad infinitum. So, so you need a base, a sustainable base, that you can come back to every year and that you know is going to be there every year, and that means a levy.
Thank you so much. And like you said, I love the part that you said about you are getting feedback from the community and stakeholders and going out there, and I would love to see that. I think the board would definitely love to see that because we definitely need to know who our supporters are, and would love to enjoy speaking and meeting with them in regards to this issue. And thank you for that, that makes more sense to me. Mr. Khan?
Ms. Robinson?
I have three questions. One is quite simple. You mentioned the taxing jurisdictions, could you kind of, I'm sorry, the, the appointing authorities? So, you mentioned like the Charter School Association. Can you go back and go over the appointing authorities?
Oh, okay, so, yeah, so there would be five appointees, be one from mayor's office, one from KCPS, one from charter schools, one from Mid-America Regional Council, and one other, off the top of my head, hang on a second here, I'll tell you. Oh, Kansas City Public Library, yeah.
Great. And so...
And then the at-large.
Okay. And so, how does this fit with our current landscape? You mentioned the Mid-America Regional Council, because aside from increasing our capacity and increasing our enrollment, because we have more money to provide this service to more kids, how does this impact our current, KCPS' current landscape with the pre-K program? Because we're, most of our kids right now are because they're low-income, and they qualify for that assistance so that they can have that, but how does it work together? Would you all take over that part?
Well, I mean, again, there's, there's funding coming from different sources, both federal, local, and, and, you know, and state money and private dollars. So, realistically, I don't think it's going to impact the amount of dollars. What, I mean, the, the tax increase that we're asking for is going to, is going to supplement that and allow the, allow us to fund a comprehensive program.
Okay, so it will be comprehensive, and so, our current program that we per se have at Woodland would stay in place, but would it be under this new group? Or will we still have the?
No, 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 no. The district would still continue, continue to operate and manage those entities. The only, the only requirement would be that those providers would have to get rated and meet a certain, a certain standard of, of quality, you know, to do, to receive funding from, from the, from ELSI, to receive the additional tax money.
Okay. And so, my last question, I'm thinking about, because you mentioned this being citywide, and I'm thinking about the, the tax that we pass with the zoo, because the taxing jurisdictions that benefited from the service all participated in sharing the liability or the, they put money in the pot. So, will we be the only tech, if this is citywide, will other cities be responsible?
It's an important distinction, okay? It's not, it's not citywide, it's within the boundaries of the district.
Okay.
So, it would be residents of the district, you know, homeowners, if, if, if we ultimately land on the property tax mill levy increase, then it would be, you know, property owners within the boundaries of the district, and that money would fund early childhood within the district.
Okay, thanks.
And if I, sorry, if I can just make sure that I, I want to make sure your question got answered. I think you might have been talking about the, the special jurisdiction, though, when you referenced the zoo. So, that, under that, that model, any jurisdiction, you know, any jurisdiction that would pass that would be able to, to then raise the tax in benefit. So, that's what that would function. I didn't know if that was your question, I just wanted to make sure I got that.
That's not the case with this. So, it's just the KCPS boundaries? Because when you say citywide, I'm thinking about the 14 school districts that are in the Kansas City, Missouri proper, so I'm just, it sounds as if that this is just talking about the Kansas City Public School boundaries.
For a mill levy, yes. It's just, it's just our boundaries, that's, that's the only thing we can raise taxes on. But if there was a, if there was legislation passed in Jefferson City that would permit this new boundary, we could broaden it, and it could expand. Ms. Montero had a question, then Mr. Evans, I'll get to you.
I had one question. Does your plan implement also looking at being NACI accredited? Which for those of you that don't know what NACI is, it's a nationwide early childhood learning standard that is like the cream of the crop, blue ribbon awards, like what Lincoln High School gets, but in for preschool nationwide that you recognize at a high, high level. So, I just want to know if your plan included that, to be NACI accredited?
Well, the state of Missouri currently has a kind of a strangely worded law which prohibits a certain type of, a specific type of rating system. So, one of the challenges of our rating entity, sort of the quality control component of all this, is to develop, whether it's taking the best of standards that may exist, and creating a system that's both compliant with the state law and ensures the delivery of quality, you know, in our programs. And the feedback we've gotten, again, has been very, very positive on this point, that we can, we can do that. To your point about whether we're going to implement that specific standard, I don't know at this point. We haven't convened that, that group yet to, to decide that, but I'm, I mean, from the feedback that you're giving, I'm sure they'll take a look at it, and I'll, I'll make that note.
Mr. Evans?
What is the timeline on the levy that you talked about? And to make sure I understand it, any school within our boundaries would benefit from this tax levy, whether it's a charter school, a private school, above the case maybe? Am I correct in that assessment?
The language that we use are, is, is, is providers. So, there are lots of different providers of early childhood education within the boundaries of the district. They would have to meet a certain quality standard. Anyone that meets, any, any school that met that standard would qualify for funding to fund the early childhood program.
I have a question. How soon do you believe you will bring a formal recommendation before this body?
Good question. You know, I, I think first of the year, end of this year, and things are starting to move a lot faster right now, but we still have, we still have work in front of us. So, and some of that I outlined in, in my presentation, but I think we'll have a better idea certainly by, you know, December, January.
Thank you very much. Board members, any further questions? All right, board members, as was asked at the beginning, I would ask for, for a show of consensus for this group to continue their work. If everyone is so inclined to continue to support the work and the research that's being done, I just ask you to raise your hand. The board is very excited about the work you're doing, and we look forward to a formal recommendation very soon.
All right, we're back to work. Thanks, you guys.
All right. Board members, that brings us to item three on our agenda, which is policy and governance. The first item up is item 3.011015SC009007. Dr. Hartsfield, would you like to introduce the act? Or present it for, for motion at least?
All right. The resolution from the board for Moore Square, is there a representative, are we going to do it at this point?
Is there a representative for Moore Square? Jan, come on, come on down. So, we will, we will present the actual proclamation after we have approved it, and we'll put it in a frame and make it very nice. But certainly wanted you to come down so we could say all these nice things we're about to say, and have someone to say them to. So, with that, Dr. Hartsfield, I would ask this, if you, if you could perhaps make a motion for adoption, and we can second it so we can get to...
Yes, we'd like to make a motion for adoption of this resolution as we celebrate the 10th anniversary of the great work that Moore Square has done and continues to do. anniversary of the great work that Moore Square has done and continues to do.
It has been moved and seconded. Board members, anyone would like to make a comment before we vote? I certainly would welcome that at this time. Mr. West?
There are a lot of times over the past decade where people have talked about supporting our scholars, but talk was cheap, and all they had to offer were words. Consistently over my time on the board, I have observed a group of faith leaders come together and not only talk, but also walk. They show, you know, the compassionate love of their faith in a very tangible way that's made a difference for children in this community. And obviously, you have been a significant part of that work. And so for your steadfastness, but certainly the consistency of the agency, I'm just incredibly, on behalf of our 14,198 scholars, incredibly grateful for the work that you all have done. Thank you so much.
Mr. Evans?
Jan, I remember when Citrus came to town, and how diligently you guys worked on that process. And you looked as if, it seemed like you almost knew that it would not come to pass. So I really appreciate the hard work that you guys put into helping us kind of move them to the rear of whatever it was that they were supposed to be. So thank you very much.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, Ms. Parks, it's just so good to see you continue to work through the years. I remember your children and my children were at Water Star, and I met at your house with the Water Star Foundation. But I'm just delighted to see the continued work that you do, and I just applaud you.
Ms. Montero?
Ms. Robinson?
Again, thank you so much for your work and your diligence and your passion in holding the bar high. I encourage you to continue to do that in terms of taking us to task and making sure that we're good stewards of, of our, our stakeholders. So thank you so much.
Ms. Montero?
I too want to express the gratitude of what Moore Square does with all the churches and pastors and community members. Laura McDonald's doing an awesome job. And for those of you that don't know Jan, she's this little quiet, she looks like a little quiet lady, but boy, when she, yeah, she's, she's like those nuns that, that they're just very, you know, obedient and quiet, so peaceful looking. But don't cross her because she, she comes prepared. She does, she, she comes prepared and has the words that'll definitely make the impact. And I am very proud to know you and, and the work that you do. So thank you so, so much.
Dr. Green, is there a comment?
Yes, Ms. Parks, and on behalf of the administration, I want to express my sincere appreciation for your standing in the gap, standing in the struggle for public education, for local administration of public education. And I applaud Moore Square for its diligence and its fight. And I appreciate and admire what you have been able to do on behalf of this community.
Any further comment from board members? I will reserve my comments and ask that we now call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Manser?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
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 Proudly.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. And on behalf of all of us, congratulations to Moore Square for making it 10 years. Happy birthday, and we look forward to being poked, prodded, and drug by Moore Square many, many times in the next few years to come. All right, board members, now looking for a motion to approve the next item on the agenda.
Second.
I think Mr. Evans beat you to it. Ms. Robinson, I apologize. Board members, any discussion around the next item on the agenda, which deals with the board's opposition to Amendment Three? Ms. Manser?
I think this is a, an important resolution that we're bringing forward. We hope that everyone here will embrace the language that we're bringing forward tonight. It's a, we're joining with lots of school districts around the state in making this kind of public statement. But there are elections coming up, and it's important that everyone participate in those elections and, and help us carry this sentiment forward. So, it's my...
Ms. Montero?
I would also like to recognize the hard work of the committee that brought the wording, but also to AFT and Andrea Flinders, President of AFT, in coming together and supporting our teachers that do the work every day with our children. And it's so much appreciated to have this honor to work alongside you and stand up for what's right for teachers. So please, please stand up, Ms. Flinders. I just, and, and any AFT members and teachers that are in here, please stand up as well.
Ms. Montero, who are your board members, I mean, who are your committee members on the committee of equity?
Eddie Manser and Melissa Robinson.
All right, hearing nothing else, I will echo the comments of my colleagues. There are times when we are not always on the same side, but I'm exceptionally proud to be able to stand with you on this issue, as it is one of vital importance to all of us. With that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
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 Yes. With that, I believe we have an item of board policy that is actually administrative policy to approve. Ah, Ms. Long, can you please introduce what we will be discussing here? Actually, before I have you do that, I would like there to be a motion made by the board to go ahead and put the item on the table before we start that presentation. So board members looking for a motion to put item three under policy and governance on the table. It's been moved and seconded. Please enlighten us.
Administrative policy, IGBCA, is one of the policies required by law to be, have any revisions approved by the board. In this particular policy revision, it is a minor change. This is involving the homeless coordinator that is, has to be approved by the board. The previous homeless coordinator has left the district. So it's a, it's a DESI requirement that the district have a homeless coordinator, a person listed in that policy. So we have suggested a new homeless coordinator who works out of federal programs to be in that position and fill that position so that we can let DESI know that we have a person in that role. And that's the only change to that policy, and it will be, again, noted in Appendix D that's attached to the Board Governance Manual.
Okay, so just to clarify, we are, we are essentially approving policy, changing the name of the person who left to the new person that the administration would like to recommend.
Correct. The name and also her office, so that parents and any homeless individuals or homeless liaison would know where to contact them. It's also her business office address and phone number.
Okay. Board members, we will open for round of questions. Ms. Montero?
Mine wasn't so much a question, mine's more just of a suggestion. Because when I was going through this, I was racking my brain. What is it, or are we changing? So I know it's, now that you've explained, it's the change of the name and office. I think just for documentation's sake, when the public or any board members are looking, if we could, like, in previous ones that you've done before, just have it highlighted of what the change is. Because I was really going, racking my brain, trying to see what, what the actual wording change was, and I didn't see anything highlighted. So that would just be helpful for future uses. Oh, mine didn't look like that at all. No.
Noted. I will try to make sure to do that.
All right, seeing no further questions. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
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 Yes. Board members, that brings us to our regular business items under item four. Looking for a motion to approve one or some of the items there.
If someone can refresh my memory, do we need to take the partial acceptance, those two items, and the levy approval of that item? Do those three items all need to be done individually?
All right. Board members looking for a motion to approve the first item on the list? It's been moved and seconded. Board members, any questions on item one? Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
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 Yes. It's been moved and seconded. Does this require any explanation from administration? Do you want to make any mo, make any explanation on?
No, we don't. I mean, unless board members have questions, I mean, you should be prepared to respond as a land parcel.
Ms. Montero?
I suspect, I suspect we probably have the same question. Can you just give us an insight for this item and the next one, land parcel, what fiscal impact there is accepting it?
On the parcels of land for Lincoln and also for Ashland, those particular items would be vacant properties that are adjacent to the school sites, and the land bank is donating those to the district, and it makes a more contiguous area for our school sites.
Ms. Montero?
Well, my question kind of was similar. It, well, when calling the land bank, yes, it is being gifted, so it is exempt, had been exempt since the last several years. And but I just wanted to go back to make sure that there was no, like, demolition fees or any asbestos fees or permit fees the late future on. And they went back as far as on some of the rec parcels to 2007, that there were tax assessments. But on three of the parcels, it was like $7. And then the other one, they explained that we would be exempt this year, but then the following year in November, when they do the tax assessment, then we would be assessed, taxed. So moving forward, this year we will be exempt, but moving on, we will probably have something. That's what I was told from the city land bank and Jackson County taxes.
No, the, the taxes will be exempt. But as far as the issue of the, the assessment, we did conduct an assessment on the property to make sure that the, that the, the lots were clean and that we, they were, that we weren't picking up or accepting something with a greater liability.
Right. No, but the assessments...
There are no taxes that would be due on those properties in the future.
Well, I was told that the land value was worth $487. So that was a tax, that was a tax assessment in 2007 for $8. So that's what my question is, going on in the future? That's what I was told by the city, that it would be like $8 for three of the parcels, and then the, the third one, they couldn't give an assessment because that had been exempt since back in 2007. And, but we would be exempt this school year for zero.
Yeah. No, there aren't any taxes due or in, now or in the future on those properties.
All right, other board members have questions? Dr. Hartsfield?
I was just looking at the document that you had attached, and it just said that there was a low fiscal impact just of maintenance. I mean, is that...
The fiscal, to maintain the yard, they cut the grass.
All right, seeing no, yes, ma'am?
Well, I mean, I'm just, the only thing, the only thing moving forward, even though it's, it is $7, you know, for three, seven, seven, and seven, $21.
It's been asked, and I think that's the answer.
Right. No, but I'm saying, you know, moving on in the future, if this is, I know we're approving it for this year, but maybe coming up for next year, if there is some assessment after the exemption is over for the first year, I would just like to revisit that the following year.
Okay, and I think the answer that was provided was that there is no assessment.
Right. Once that property is donated to the district, becomes a district property, we're then tax exempt, not required to pay any tax on it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tunas, for providing that. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
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 Yes. Board members looking for a motion for the next item on the agenda? It's been moved and seconded. Any conversation around 042? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to see if we did a comparative of how much that depart, that, that department pays for rent, because I guess they're going to be paying us for rent. So is it, do we do a comparative study to see if we got our, for the office space that they're using?
As you can see, how much is the state paying for its residency in our...
Yeah.
Compared to the market rate, are they paying, what, the market demands are less or getting a discount or inflation?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at more of a break even. We're not paying one Kansas City place kind of rates. I think it's $54,000 is...
I believe it's, the total's about $54,000, but in comparing to the market, it is, I don't want to call it the family rate, but it's, it's, it's a rate because, again, the idea that it's a community school, we're encouraging community partners, state is a community partner, they bring their agencies there, provide service to our community. So we want to make sure that our costs are covered. We're not subsidizing or underwriting in any way. But it is less than the normal commercial market rate.
Thanks.
All right, there are no further questions. Board members, or Madam Secretaries, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
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 Yes. Board members looking for an approval of item number four on our regular business agenda? It's been moved and seconded. This is another tract of land. Any conversation? Please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
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 Yes. Board members looking for a motion to put the fifth and final item on our regular business agenda on the books. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Tunas, could you perhaps give a brief, brief explanation as to why we are voting on this and...
This is a statute requirement, a requirement of the law. The Board of Education must, by October 1st, approve the levy. Our, our levy has been set by a federal judge at $4 and, less than $4.96. The, the statute requires that it is set less than $4.96, and the board has elected in the past to set a rate at $4.95. So we comply with the statute in both setting the levy and, and what the amount of the levy is.
Any questions, board members? Ms. Montero?
What was our previous dollar amount?
$4.95.
So it's staying the same?
Yes.
Okay.
We have not had a levy increase since 1968, is what I'm hearing. And sadly, we do not have the authority to set a levy increase up here. So that requires the community to support us. With that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
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 Yes. Board members, that brings us to our final item on the agenda. Your motion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans, yes. Mr. Green, Dr. Hartfield, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Montero?
No.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, before we adjourn, I do want to highlight two of our board members. Whenever I get the chance, I'd like to point out when our volunteer board members are giving of more of their time and more of their energies. And so Mr. West and Dr. Hartsfield will be journeying to the MSBA statewide conference this weekend, again, giving of their time and bringing back all kinds of great information. So I wanted to recognize both of them and wish them safe travels and thank them both for representing us so well at this conference. With that, we adjourn. Thank you, board members, for a great meeting.